Meeting to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. It's been awhile.
Edmian don't.
Oh my gosh, we can meet in person, I love it. Thank you. So, thanks for coming everybody, we had a nice day today, we got a special meeting. Roll call please.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Artie Brison.
Here.
Krista Regan.
Absent excuse.
Kristy Hilton.
Absent excuse.
Cindy Valentine here, Maureen Bory. Joanne Shirkey.
Okay, alright, good to see you Maureen, our first meeting together. How about that?
So, I'd just like to note for our video that Joanne and Maureen are here, just not sitting up at this table, that's all.
Right, we're social distancing, so. Okay, public comments, do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Okay, hearing no public comments, roll right into new business, we're here for a presentation from Mterra and Dan Garman, right? Come on up, Dan, there's a podium there and.
You can move that mic up a little bit.
I don't know if it's, is it on?
I'm sure, yeah, probably is.
Okay. Hi, my name is Dan Garman, if you want my address.
Nah, you're just from.
I just sort of use official, so I'll say it's thirty-one forty-five North Irish Road, Davidson, Michigan, four eight four two three. I had the pleasure of meeting Artie back in, um, the spring, I came in for a luncheon to work out, uh, to come, uh, he met with a sales rep that Mterra had for our, for you at that time, his name was Gary Veristo. At that luncheon, we were discussing a couple of issues that, and Artie had said hadn't been fixed or needed improvements on, um, so I told Gary I would get involved and fix a couple of issues that were, were being done then. Talked about switching, that they, there wasn't a very, uh, good opinion of the old supervisor and, um, I was trying to see the basis of how our new supervisor, which was Mike, was working out and Artie said he was good, so we made sure that that stayed and, and the stuff, we got along really well that day, so. When I heard that things were not going very well with the negotiations with Gary and Artie, um, a couple of weeks ago, I asked if I could come to a meeting, which happened, what, two weeks ago, Artie?
I believe so.
And again, that negotiation, I didn't think went very, very well either, um, Gary has serviced this community for a long time, maybe possibly too long, um, had opinions that weren't exactly the same way that Mterra nor myself does business. So I took that back to Mterra Angelo, which is the general manager there that runs Mterra, uh, he agreed with me, so last week, uh, Artie and I and Angelo met in his office, uh, with Kristy as well, and I think that meeting went much better. And, uh, your contract currently ends on March thirty-first, which is just a few weeks away. And we've serviced this community for a long time, now granted, um, I haven't been the one involved in there. I have been in the waste, uh, industry since two thousand and two, I have been working in Genesee County, I currently not only work for Mterra, but I actually work for GFL in Oakland County, and I work for a company called Waste Pro in Florida. So these waste hauling companies hire my firm to do sales and customer service for them, so I'm not a one-man show, I have my own staff that helps me work, helps me organize, making sure that if I tell a resident something's gonna be done, it gets done no matter what, even if the waste hauling company can't pull it off. So basically, I'm hired to make the waste hauling company look good in those communities, um, so that you guys can then look good for hiring them. So, the packet you have in front of you today, I talked to Artie about a few things, um, after our meeting last week, I went back and did what I do on a company, um, I went back, looked at how we can make the, the route more efficient. I looked at all the things that, uh, Artie and, uh, Kristy had told me that they didn't like that was, that had happened before, and I looked at the stuff that I do for other communities and put together a plan, um, looked for efficiencies and looked for a way to continue our relationship, knowing you only have a couple of weeks left in a contract, to not only, um, possibly improve your price, but also get you what your, what your residents desire more than anything, not just price, but really good service. Cause I think that's the, the most important thing across the board, um, I had told Artie he could call any of my communities for any of my haulers and every one of them, no matter who the hauler is, they get really good service. Bottom line, because I'm there to kind of ride the waste hauler as well as to make sure the municipality is getting listened to, um, on both sides and the residents. So what I'm looking for, you have in your packet, I have an, a letter for Artie in there, I was able to, um, sit down with the supervisors and actually the guys that are on the streets here, and I shaved a dollar off your current price, per household, per month. And I also locked that for all three years, so I don't want a five-year deal, I want a three-year deal with a locked price, so save your residents some money and lock it. Now, we're not, we don't, you guys pay your own landfill bills, so this is just for those services, not the landfill, cause I don't know how control Smith Creek, but what I can control is this price. And in those three years, while the price is locked and you're saving a little bit of cash, um, show you really good service and the, the little things that you guys aren't getting, that actually most waste haulers don't provide anyway. So I'm gonna show you some of those things, so, we talked about education level, we talked about some, some of the calls that come in here really aren't complaint calls as much as just not knowing calls, things about recycling, people questioning if the stuff is going to a recycling center. You guys didn't even know at that time that currently we have just, um, opened one of the largest recycling centers in Michigan in downtown Lansing, that's where all your materials are going, so we're keeping that here in Michigan, it's processed with some of the top technology for a recycling center. Um, and I would love to take the whole staff here, um, to Lansing, we could maybe video it and put it on your website, or maybe put it on Facebook, so people can see exactly where their recycling is going with some of your representatives present, present with that. So, I'd also like to provide some, um, a mailer to your residents, because it doesn't sound like they've been getting mailed very often information about recycling, um, so, knowing that the girls that answer the phones at the front desks, because after I met with Artie both times, I had the, the pleasure of speaking to them upfront, really nice, uh, people, but they said, one of their biggest complaints is, there's never enough bins. And especially when it's cold, they get broken, and then when they run out of bins, people are upset, cause they don't have bins, um, I can, you could call any municipality, they're always an onslaught of bins, broken bins, lost bins, stolen bins, everything, so you have to make sure the municipality at any time has no less than twenty. Because the last thing you wanna do here is to have no bins, when someone, when a residence come in, cause that just makes them upset and starts the curve off wrong. So, mailing about recycling, um, getting some information, showing you guys the recycling center, so you can pass it on and have a video that your residents can see, I really think can help answer some questions on recycling and where it's going. Maybe see the timeline too, to where it goes from here to there and walk it right through to the purchase of those materials. But the bottom line is, from, from what Artie said, no matter how it went with Gary in the past, the bottom line is the service level. We have, we do have a very good supervisor now, Artie will back that, that Mike Legree does a, a good job of being accountable and talking upfront and making sure everything's done whenever possible. But there's some things that you guys are missing that I noticed, um, and you'll see that on the letters that I provided for you that I do, is monitoring social media. Kristy said there's probably four or five Facebook pages, just in Clay Township alone, um, in Burton, I think I serviced ten different Facebook pages for that city. Now granted, that city's eleven thousand households, but they have ten Facebook pages that I monitor, all of them. Now like I said, I don't monitor them all myself, I have people that help me monitor them, but if someone puts a complaint on there and says, for example, I showed, um, Artie and Kristy of someone putting out recycling in a storage bin, why wasn't this picked up? I can answer that question quickly, so it doesn't spiral into, you know, a negative situation. You can always then help educate that person, and I don't do it in public, so I'll say, can you please message me, or can you please call me, here's my cellphone number, I will publish my cellphone number to any place, your newspaper, your Facebook pages, whatnot, people can call me any day of the week, I do turn it off at about eleven o'clock at night though. But, I find that if someone answers the phone or at least calls them back, it calms them down, they have someone that'll listen to them. Um, and I always take notes and I call back, it may not be within an hour, because I don't have the information that I've researched enough in the next hour to be able to do that. But again, speaking of residents, uh, Artie had, had said that normally it's your people at the front desk answering the phones at all times, that really has to end, and I spoke to the girls upfront about that. If you're a resident, on a scale of one to ten, upset about something to do with waste recycling or compost, if, even if it's subscription, um, if they're over a three, I need to take that call, it can't be them. Their job isn't to hear upset residents about garbage, you guys hire us for that. So I take all the calls that are above a three, that way I can log it and follow up to make sure it doesn't happen again, that way the supervisors know, hey, this guy, he gets upset about this, don't, because you can have something as little as, hey, we tipped his can over, he had loose stuff in the bottom that was frozen, but by the time he came home from work, it was on the ground, he's so wired about it, that they're just gonna get yelled at, at least I can listen to him, fix it, get that on the onboard computer to make sure we double check that, and maybe if he's got frozen stuff in the bottom, we don't tip that can over. So it's important that I know those things and they get relayed, you know, to the guys on, on the truck. Again, kind of working with the Clay Township staff, from talking to Artie, he was shaking his head yes at our meeting a lot when I kept saying, well, are you guys kept in the loop, do you guys get the phone logs, do you guys get this, do you, like, little things that I do, copying them with phone logs, so every call I get, I gets logged. I tell them, this is what happened, here how, here's how it was resolved, so if that resident ever comes, whoop, ever comes in and talks to him or you, you have a, a database to say, you did call in twice and here's how they fixed it. So it's a little hard for someone to be upset about something if it's, or if it's their fault, cause sometimes, sometimes it's the resident's fault that things don't happen, they don't wanna hear that, but they wouldn't hear that from me really, they would really just get it in the notes back to Artie or for you guys to see. Community follow-up is a big one too, if you're not involved in the community with Facebook pages or trying to know what's going on, or, again, on those Facebook pages, sounds crazy, but the more that goes on there and I can say, hey, Mterra would be glad to do this, or do that, let's say you have a festival, even if it's just, hey, we want, we're gonna hand out some flyers there, there's gotta be some community involvement, there's gotta be more here things, our supervisors, um, I don't know, trainings, things that, that go on here to make the situation better that we do, that I do in my other communities. Educating the staff too, um, when I had spoke to them here with Angelo, we were kind of shocked to know that you guys had never sat down with your representative and gone through pretty much everything, like your routes, where we're starting, where we're finishing, um, how we're, how the process that we're working with, so that you know, so that the, the girls that answer the phone can say, well, I'm pretty sure if it's nine o'clock and you're the first stop on their route, they've already been to your place. That you guys don't have that communication, and that is really important to a good relationship. And, I guess when I tell you all this stuff, it probably sounds pretty good, and you're, and you might be saying, well, I'm probably not gonna get those things, it's just a lot of talk, um, can you, if you can take a second to read the reference letters I gave you, you'll see that those are some pretty big communities, uh, Mount Morris Township's about eight thousand homes, I've had that since two thousand and two. Richfield, the Richfield Township letters from Joe Mador, Joe Mador not only is the Richfield Township Supervisor that I service with Mterra, and I've had that account since two thousand and four, but he is also the city manager of the Village of Oxford, which I service with a different waste hauler. And I'm pretty sure if you called him, he would tell you, it wouldn't matter what waste hauler I had, the service would be really, really good, and I would hold their feet to the fire to make sure that the city or the township or the village got the service that they demanded in their contract. And last but not least, there's something, after reviewing your contract and going over with Artie, that you guys don't have in your contract, that I really think is important to any waste hauling contract, not just yours, but it's in every contract that I service, is a service contract agreement, it basically is a paragraph that says, hey, if we're not doing the job you guys expect and want, we have a meeting, you tell us what we're not doing that you want, and if it's not fixed in thirty days, you're out of the contract. Cause you have to stand behind the words that you give in the contract, so you should have some type of service level guarantee in your contract. Now, I can't sit here and guarantee to anybody, and no waste hauler can, that no stop's ever gonna be missed, and that you're not gonna get any calls, cause you are, no matter what, whether it's someone putting stuff out late, or my guys didn't dump everything they have, or they didn't see a white bag in a giant snowbank. Some are our fault, some are their fault. The bottom line is, it's how you deal with that customer when the, when the issues happen, that make you a good waste hauling company and a good sales representative.
So, so Dan, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah, for sure.
So I'm confused, so if someone has a issue with the garbage, do they call your company, or do they call Mterra, excuse me, Mterra?
Well, at these, like I said, if it's over a three, so right now, let, sort of like, uh.
Well, no.
They said upfront, they called, they would call, thinking, I'll have my number will be out there, it'll be on every commu, if, if, if you guys do the extension, every communication you have with your residents will have my cellphone number on it, it'll still have the eight hundred number on it, cause some people like to call the company, but it, odds are they're gonna end up talking to me at some point.
Cause, well, I had three calls today.
Okay.
One was, uh, Little Road, the, the garbage got picked up, but the recycling didn't get picked up, and apparently they, it hasn't been picked up for three weeks in a row. I had a Jacqueline Bauer at the end of Lake Point, she, her house is at the end of a cul-de-sac, it gets missed several times, and then you transferred me a call too, so. And a lot of them, they say, they called Mterra, but we didn't.
Prefer they called me.
Well, that's, that's.
I would just prefer, especially at the beginning of this, I would prefer that I see every call.
So are you, just to be clear, you're saying that Gary is no longer our rep to contact, it would be you directly?
It would be me, yep. Yep.
How long you been with, uh, Mterra as a contractor?
Since two thousand and twelve, when they came to the United States.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Since two thousand and twelve, when they came to the United States.
And how often have you dealt here with, in Clay Township?
Have I been in Clay Township?
Yeah.
Since last week.
Okay, so, uh, I guess I can't ask you how many, uh, on a percentage basis, how many complaints you have dealt with?
I haven't dealt, I, I, the only, I've dealt with one in Clay Township.
What about the supervisor that's in this area, what has he dealt with?
Mike has dealt with a lot, cause he's been your supervisor since our meeting in end of April, no, cause it was before the pandemic, so it must have been the beginning of March, uh, late February.
What's your plan on resolving con, conflicts?
Pardon me?
What's your plan on resolving conflicts?
So if you call and you have a missed stop, and you're in Clay Township, I'm going to listen, cause a lot of times it's more than just a miss.
So who's, who's that call, is it?
I prefer it comes to me.
Okay.
So it comes to me, you call, you say your stop was missed, I've already talked to Artie, I'm gonna need some help in this area, well, I'm gonna need some help in this area, cause I would like to hire somebody that will work for me, that I can call on a, when I get a call, to pick up a missed stop, so that a garbage truck doesn't have to come over and get it.
Are you gonna directly communicate with the complainant?
Yes, sir, for sure, I wanna talk to your residents, I'll never know what to fix and how to do it right, if I'm not talking to your resident.
So that's gonna be pretty much immediately, or are you gonna wait and analyze it and investigate what was wrong and then, then, and then talk to her?
A missed stop, no, no way, you don't have time on missed stop, you just gotta send someone out there to pick it up. If it's, if it's, we're missing the end of a dead end, and the person tells me, sir, I've been missed ten times, then I'm gonna send someone out to pick it up, and then I've gotta investigate why it's being missed ten times.
What's your turnover rate on, uh, drivers and, uh?
I don't know in Clay Township, I can only tell you in Genesee County.
Is that, is that, you think that's a problem?
I think it's a problem across the country and everything, with truck drivers right now with the shortage, everyone's jumping for better jobs, my nephew does hiring for UPS in Flint, and they lose guys every day, and the trucking end. Now, the guys in the back of the truck is a different story, the turnover rate isn't as bad there, and it, that was flip-flop five years ago, five years ago, the drivers stayed forever, it was the guys on the back of the truck that you always had the turnover with, now your major turnover is your drivers.
What's your safety, uh, record?
I don't know in this area, to be totally honest with you, I can only tell you in Genesee County, and it's very good in Genesee County.
You got a track record with a lot of other communities, but you don't have your track record set.
No, I, no, I totally understand that.
So that's an unknown, oh, okay, thank you.
No, I, and I, and I totally understand that, but I, this is not my territory, um, and I told that to Artie when we met, um, this is not where I work right now, not to say I can't expand this far, but in order to do the right job when you're farther away, you have to find people in that area that you can work with to get it done. Because if I tell you your stop's gonna be picked up, I need to be able to call somebody and have it picked up within an hour, cause that's the only way it makes you happy, and not saying you as a board member, I mean you as a resident. If that resident's stuff is resolved quickly, it's a way different story, because I need them to go back onto Facebook after posting my stuff was missed and correct it. Any other questions?
Are you familiar with Harson's Island at all?
I do know a little bit from what I've been trying to study over the last weeks to get the rates down, um, and taking the, and getting the ferry out there and to servicing that, and we've talked about, I would probably have to have a, someone that I work with on both Harson's Island and on the mainland that I work with. Because there's no way I want someone to have to wait to get over to the island to service a client, cause that could take more than an hour, so I had talked to Artie about getting somebody out in both places, someone on the mainland and then somebody out there that can work for me that I can pay, and I'd probably pay him via PayPal, so as soon as they provided a picture that it was finalized and done, I could immediately pay them.
Do you have anybody in mind for that, Artie?
No, but I'm sure we can find somebody, I mean.
Like I said, I apologize, I don't know the stuff about, around here, I would have to learn it all, but like I said, I also don't know a lot of people right now in Hollywood, Florida, and I don't know their safety rate in Hollywood, Florida, but if you were to call Waste Pro down there and ask how Waste Pro is doing in Hollywood, Florida with anybody on that council, they'd be very happy. And I can talk to people there on the phone, and you guys are a lot closer than Hollywood, Florida, you're a little colder, but you are a, a lot closer than they are, and I handle everything there pretty smoothly.
Unfortunately, we're here today because of the inability to resolve conflicts with the residents of Clay Township, and if somebody up north, uh, that has that information that I asked, he should be here.
I agree, I'm, I'm not gonna argue on that, but I can, I can get to all the, any safety rate, or, I don't think they've ever logged the calls here or there on who's called in to try to have a track record. I did ask for it here, the, the girl said that, that they don't currently log all the complaint calls.
You'd have to hire someone. Wasn't so, and, and for the rec, record, I mean, it was horrific for several years, last six months or so, it has gotten better, but.
I think it's improved with Mike being on board.
Right.
For sure.
And Mike is staying, I work well with Mike, right now, um, I have covered for Gary and stuff when he was injured in a car accident, so I helped cover for him, so I'm familiar a little with some of the, the communities around here, but like I said, I'm doing the sales and the customer representation in a different state, and they don't, they can never tell that I'm not in their state. So for you guys to be a little over an hour away won't be any different for me.
So you would put all these things into place right away?
To, tomorrow.
And we have a thirty-day dissatisfaction in the service agreement, okay?
For sure, I, and I don't understand that, why that wasn't in your contract before, to be totally honest with you, cause I've never seen one, none that I've ever been involved with don't have that in there, and I mean with any waste hauler. So, when I asked, I even said it to Artie, I'm like, well, it's gotta be in your contract, he's like, it's not in there, Dan, so, and I, I was a little shocked at that. I, yeah, I do, I actually have it in my seat too, I pulled it today, cause I didn't, now that I didn't believe you, Artie, I was just shocked, I've never seen it not in a waste hauling contract before.
Well, I told you, that's one of the things that has to go in.
I, I don't think I would wanna represent any waste hauler without that in there, that is a very key element of holding everybody's feet to the fire.
Did you use the vice on lunch too? What else was I gonna say? So, how, how many, how many communities does your company service?
Right now, I service eighteen in Genesee County, I make up over eighty percent of Genesee County that I service. I service three communities in Florida, which make up about a hundred thousand homes, and then I service for GFL in Oakland County, I service West Bloomfield, Oxford Village, uh, Lake Orion Village, um, Highland Township, um, Orchard Lake, and Sylvan Lake and Kegel Harbor. Which are, in my estimations, very, very similar to yours with all the back roads and the back downs and the lake properties and everything, um, also Argentine, that Mterra is my account in, in Fenton is very similar to that too. No islands that are serviced with the truck, there are a couple islands that, that the people bring their waste out, but there are a lot of back downs and roads, and I'm not gonna deny, there's issues, I mean, sometimes there's issues on icy roads, which can't get down some roads due to ice, you gotta talk to the people and find a solution for them. Maybe on an icy day, they bring their, their garbage down, you know, three driveways to make sure it's picked up, and then you talk to the person three driveways down the road from them to make sure that's okay, um, but you have to solve those problems, and you don't do that by not communicating with people.
How many, how many people you have working for you?
I have two other sales reps, I have an assistant, and then I have three guys right now that I do, that are kind of like runners, so, I have, and then I have an accountant, so I have, I have a staff of about eleven. But not all of them are full-time. And I think, like I said before, I was, you know, looking for a three-year contract, um, your residents will save a little bit of money over what they've been paying in the past, I think this would be, represent the cheapest price you've had in like seven, eight years, um, and then you'd have a guarantee of good customer service, cause frankly, it'd be in your contract, that if it wasn't good service, you could leave it. And you would have a very involved sales rep, whether, you know, whether Artie really wants that or not, someone calling him, sharing information and stuff, because that way you also are always involved, if a resident calls and something happens, it's that, that's, you know, I, a lot of times I even try to get video, pictures, things like that, and I know you guys aren't used to that, so if someone's an habitual late setter, and I can't fix it, the only way I can fix it is to start taking pictures that when we're there and it's timestamped, that it's not there. And then I have to put that back in your court to say, hey, we've been there at this time, this time, this time, this time, here's all the pictures, so, to show you that it wasn't us, but that's what you have to do to make sure you're providing the best, you know, service. Is there any other questions I can answer? And Mark, I can get you that data if you want it by tomorrow.
No, I don't need it by tomorrow.
Okay. I mean, I'll call the guys tonight, though, like I said, that's the other thing that the sales guys, not sales guys, I'm sorry, the supervisors, they work for Mterra and that work with GFL, I have also built very good relationships with them, you would be surprised at what you can get those guys to work with the guys and the staff, if you take good care of them too, so when I call, they answer.
Well, you, you know as well as I do that, uh, turnover rate can be a big problem on service.
At, oh, one hundred percent, and a lot, and trainings, new guys, not knowing the roads, not knowing those things, so. But that's also a good thing that I can call and tell Artie, hey, we got a new guy in there today, so let me know if you hear anything, and I can put that on Facebook, hey, we have a new guy working this week, you know, driving this week, let me know how things go. You would be surprised at how happy people are to help you if you tell them stuff upfront.
I know when, uh, we met with you, Dan, and Angelo was with you from Mterra, um, basically you said you were gonna figure out your break-even costs and give us a quote for that for three years, and this is pretty much it, or?
It was eleven fifty-three, was the break-even.
Your break-even? So you're actually a little below your br, break-even costs?
Well, cause I told, when I left that day, I told you, I tried to save you a dollar.
Right.
So I held with Emmy, which is our CEO and our owner, that I said, I need this to at least be a dollar. And again, we're holding it for three years, which will represent right now the only community we have that has locked prices. But, bottom line is, I don't think you guys have gotten the service level that you deserved over the last few years, at least from the customer service end, and the follow-up.
Like, like I told you, it, it'd make my job a lot easier, but I could just sign, sign it and, and keep going, you know, but, um, we still do have a, a lower price bid, I, I do know that, and, well, you know that too, and the board, so.
Kind of like I told you, I would never say anything.
Formal proposal with that service level agreement in it anyways, so.
Right.
I would never say anything about another waste hauler, cause they all work hard, and they all do, in my mind, they all do a good job, you're not gonna find any waste hauler that's around nowadays that doesn't work hard and do a good job, it's just the way the industry works now.
What can you, uh, do to improve, uh, this billing rate, as far as cost and service is concerned, uh, anything, uh, as far as, uh, I always call a cost reduction.
Yeah, I can't get it any lower.
And you can pass it along to the township, anything?
Well, your current rate right now is twelve fifty-two, that you did for the last year, so it'd be, that, that right there represents us shaving off every possible thing we can do to get it, the dollar less, and like, Artie asked, can you, can you give me a reduction and show us good service in order for us to renew it with you, and I'm like, what are you looking at, and he's like, a dollar? So I'm like, alright, I won't come back to you unless I can get it to the dollar.
So we can't squeeze you anymore, is what you're saying?
No, sir. That would be way, way, way above my pay grade.
And with the cost of fuel going up, it's, uh.
Correct, and, and that's, that's, that's what, that's the other point is.
A fuel surcharge when it goes X mile, all the, all the garbage haulers is pretty much standard.
Right. But we also, we obviously we're Teamsters Union and if you can imagine that, they get raises every year. So you're going back to like seven years of the price, lower than the price you had seven years ago, which represents that we've given employees on their, you know, 4% raises every year.
Are they unionized?
Yes, Teamsters Union.
What, what, what?
You're going to ask me the question. I know the one in Flint, but I don't know the one here. Again, I'll get you those answers. I don't, I, I'm pretty sure they're all the same Teamsters Union right in Genesee County though.
You want to repeat what you said about seeing the language?
Oh, well, we don't have anything formal to approve, so we couldn't approve anything tonight. If we wanted to, we'd have to see something that has that service level guarantee and. Whatever amendments that you're going to make to that contract, including the pricing before we could even vote on anything, so.
Artie asked me about bringing a contract tonight and I said, I didn't want to until you guys had a chance to meet, meet me. Because if you didn't like me or I didn't, I couldn't through my reference letters and maybe calling my references, couldn't convince you guys that your service would improve. Then it really wasn't worth it because you guys really need your service level to improve. And I don't mean like the guys throwing the garbage except to help educate them to better do it. I mean on your point of contact.
Yeah, I believe all we've ever had is just one flyer for recycling, although I will say this one's a little bit nicer. It's a little bit more, has more clarity as to what you accept or, you know, why you don't accept, accept some of the things that you don't, so.
You start putting that on Facebook a couple of weeks in a row, it'll start getting a lot better. So not only mail it, but then also every time someone puts out recycling that's wrong or has a question about recycling, I'll reply and I'll add that to it. So you just keep getting it in front of people and things get better.
Sure.
It's just an education thing that you got to get over. Cause it was just three years ago, you're telling everybody to put Styrofoam in the recycling.
A lot of people don't realize what goes in it. I mean, I just recently went to Florida for personal reasons, but their recycle bins say right on them, what exactly you can put in them. You know, and they have, I think a blue one and a yellow one, ones for paper, ones for glass. And cans and plastic, but you know, you don't know until you look at the bin and it tells you exactly what it is that they take in there, which is nice. You know, if it's not on there, don't put it in there. It goes in the trash.
Instead of doing flyers, maybe we could look into doing stickers to put on the bins. Like I said, it, it, that's what working together does. But I didn't want to bring a contract to you and, and until you guys were interested in seeing one. I didn't think, I think that would be presumptuous of me to come in with a contract and actually kind of, you know, in my mind rude.
When can you have a, give me a contract?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
I could have one too tomorrow.
I'd like to have our legal look at it too.
Of course. It'll be very easy. I'm just going to take your current contract that you have. I'm going to add in the performance agreement. Language. I'm going to add in the new prices. And that's it. I mean, your other contract covered everything, except it didn't have a performance agreement and it didn't have, obviously the, the prices we're offering.
Again, that's something we can discuss in our next board meeting, which we'll be putting together on Thursday, the paperwork for that. So if you have it completed by then and you can shoot it over to Legal, she's usually pretty quick. Potentially be on our next board meeting, which is next Monday.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions for Dan?
Nope, I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you for all the information.
Oh yeah, no problem. Artie, will you give me Mark's email so I can answer all the questions that he had today too?
Yeah, I'll shoot it to you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. All right. Board member comments in person. Cindy.
Happy to be here in person and I'm hoping that this gets better and easier and the in-person meetings stick.
Yep, me too.
And thank you, Dan, for coming out. We appreciate it.
Joanne.
I agree with Cindy. I just couldn't be back face to face instead of zooming around.
Right. Yeah, I'm all right.
Fun, my first time.
Yay.
All right, celebration.
Sounds good.
And it's reviewing a garbage contract.
Yeah.
Oddly enough, that was my first meeting, Maureen.
Well, it's really important. I mean, it's a big expense for us, so this is.
Yep.
That's a very important thing.
Yeah, it does feel good to be back here, sitting here and representing the township. Love it.
It would really be good.
Thanks, Artie.
All right, yeah, the only thing I have, thanks for coming to short notice. Threw it together and yeah, it's important, you know, our garbage and something that we can't take lightly and. Like Maureen said, it is a big expense, yearly expense and for the township and, and all the residents, so.
I did want to ask, did you, you said we'd have some other bids too? You were asking around.
Yeah.
So are they in the vicinity of these or?
Well, I gave it to you, the priority waste.
Right, but did you do any other ones?
No, I didn't receive any others.
Just these two, but you put it out there and nobody, nobody did that.
Right.
Got it. I just wondered, I was hoping, you know, maybe we have more selection.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, second.
Support.
On the table, eyes. All right, thanks for coming, everybody. Our next meeting is next week, Monday, 15.
We'll be here again?
Yep.